Good evening and welcome to our regular scheduled board meeting. Thank you for your presence. This time, roll call.
Mrs. Baylor?
Here.
Mr. Bravo?
Here.
Mrs. Lasher?
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Reverend Walker?
Present.
Mr. Alexander?
Present.
At this time, we have two outstanding students who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. From Early College, Darius Stewart, and from Higher CLC, McKenna Garrett. May we stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to thank them for volunteering, accepting the invitation to lead us. If they would just come back and thank you. At this time, we have community and school reflections. So if we have any reflections from our board members? Yes?
I'd like to really quickly thank the Kiwanis Club, the Downtown Kiwanis Club in Akron. They are a partner with Jennings right now, middle school, and they have Builders Club there. And it's been regally successful. They had their first real year last year. They're expecting to be really strong again this year. They're also planning on and hoping to expand into all of our middle schools and perhaps high schools within the next few years. So I got to go to their luncheon last week and they talked a little bit about what a great job our students are doing and want to thank them for their continued outreach and for Kiwanis' goals that so link up with Akron Public Schools.
Anyone else?
Just very quickly, want to give a shout out to our folks at Firestone that were part of the jazz ensemble that performed at the state of the county. It was excellent and they always represent us very well, so really enjoyed that. Although I won't have a report out tonight as part of tonight's committee reports, I also attended my first meeting as part of a working group talking about our early childhood education initiative. So looking forward to being able to report out to the board about that in months to come.
Thank you.
Also quickly, thank you to United Way who did the Stuff the Bus Initiative. I went to ResNeck and got to pass out the backpacks that they stuffed. It was so, so cool. And the kids and the teachers, I think, were very, very appreciative. And also congratulations to one of our own who won an Employee of Distinction Award that the Goodwill Group passed out. That was a luncheon earlier last week.
Anyone else? If not, there is no one to address the board tonight. And at this time, we have recognitions and we have a proclamation coming from the Ohio Treasurer's Office.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of Ohio Treasurer, Robert Sprague, I'd like to present this proclamation to Superintendent David James. In recognition of receiving the 2019 Sam Miller Goodness Award from the Values and Action Foundation at the Celebration of Goodness Ceremony. In receiving this great distinction, the Values and Action honors and celebrates your active involvement within the community by serving as proud superintendent of the Akron Public Schools. Your integrity, leadership, and commitment to the local educational community exemplifies the quantities of a truly outstanding leader. Your sense of duty and commitment to education is evident, and your leadership and hard work serve the legacy of Sam Miller for years to come. So congratulations.
You want to just stand there? I think you're going to take a picture? Thank you very much. And as the board remembers, Mr. Miller and I were there along with staff and other persons and our partners in our community when Dr. James was so honored with that award. At this time, we will recognize students who've earned a perfect score on the Spring 2019 OST. Mr. Miller will help me and we're going to call the names of those students. And if you would come forward as your name is being called, you will receive a packet, so don't leave quickly. Just wait till you receive that as we share with you this evening.
Reverend Walker, are they taking a picture?
Yes. And they will take a picture also. Thank you. And Mrs. Kelly will assist as well. We have some very outstanding students. We have received the results of the Spring 2019 Ohio State Test, and it is our pleasure to recognize the students who earned a perfect score in one or more areas of the test. There are 48 students with a perfect score. Three of them received two perfect scores and several and several of them have received perfect scores for multiple years. We will call the student's name and we would like for them to come forward, to be recognized, and receive their Certificate of Achievement. I will be pausing because there are some students who have just done outstanding and we'll have a few little notes and say a couple of words about them as well. So let's begin. From our Early College, and if I mispronounce your name, when you come up, whisper it in my ear and I'll say it again. Lila Bithofer. Lilia. Congratulations. Again, from Early College, Darius Stewart. From Akron STEM High School, David Bitshell. And afterwards, we'll take a complete picture of everyone, so don't leave. Let me just say a word about David. David, STEM High School student, earned a perfect score in geometry. In 2018, he earned a perfect score in Algebra I. In 2017, he earned a perfect score in seventh grade math. In 2016, he earned a perfect score in sixth grade math. Thomas Demuth. Thank you.
In the meantime, I do have a few words to say.
And if Darius, if you would quickly come up, I'm so excited, then give you your certificate.
Thank you.
I have a few words myself to say.
Okay.
Well. I would prefer to say to you a lot.
Oh, okay.
You know how STEM middle school is a science school? Well, language arts is important as well. And did you know that Jut Hankinson, at the moment, is having to pay her own money to buy some books so that way her students can read them? Honestly, I think she should receive some allowance for the results.
You see that gentleman over there? He is our finance CEO. And we attempt in every way possible to support our teachers, to make sure they have whatever they need for their classroom. We provide avenues where they might be able to generate funds to secure what they need in their classroom, but it's students like you that help to make sure that happens. So remember that face? Thank you. Congratulations. Roy Bell. Come up closer.
You guys can come up closer for your students.
Tara Brimeyer. And if there's a representative from the family present or teacher from the school, Luke Buckingham. Christian DeLute. And then Claire Hofer. And then Claire, Firestone CLC, earned a perfect score this year in two areas, American History and Biology. And Kenton Kern from Firestone CLC as well, earned a perfect score in Algebra I. And in 2018, he earned a perfect score in eighth grade math. And in 2017, he earned a perfect score in sixth grade social studies. Abigail Lit. Jonah Zorn. And then I am Lendersmith.
Lendersmith, right here.
Okay. Want to come forward? Thank you. Thank you very much for your outstanding work. Cassandra Bumba. Bamba. Like the song, "Bamba." Right. Violet Borger. McKenna Garrett. Naira Rivera. And next, Middle School as well, we have Derek Steedley. Now Derek, from Higher CLC, earned a perfect score in sixth grade math. And in 2018, he earned a perfect score in fifth grade math. And in 2017, he earned a perfect score in fourth grade math. And in 2016, he earned a perfect score in third grade math. Reese Tucker. Reese Tucker, Higher CLC as well, earned a perfect score in fifth grade English Language Arts. And in 2018, she earned a perfect score in fourth grade math. Emma Zawaski. You want to come a little closer if you can. Congratulations. Samuel Adenai. And I'm definitely going to have a problem with this. Tawala Tu. Mary Sisler. Delaney Lewis. Trevor Boss. Jakay Damke. Anna Farag. And Litchfield student, earned a perfect score in sixth grade math in 2018 and earned a perfect score in fifth grade math. Also, the young man who just came forward, earned, from Litchfield as well, earned a perfect score in sixth grade math. And in 2018, he earned a perfect score in fifth grade math. So we want to congratulate him. Congratulations, Anna. Congratulations. And Mava Lyle. From Litchfield. Now, Mava earned this score, perfect score, in two areas, sixth grade math and sixth grade English Language Arts. In 2018, she earned perfect scores in two areas again, fifth grade math and fifth grade science. In 2017, she earned a perfect score in fourth grade English Language Arts. And if that was not enough, in 2016, she earned a perfect score in two areas again, third grade math, third grade English Language Arts, and third grade math. Congratulations. Annalise Barnes. Noah Berry. Megan Demuth.
Same pronunciation as my surname.
Amelia Gippen. Riley Kirkbride. And then William Smith, who goes by Light. Late. Andreas Varner Waltz. They're best friends and they do excellent work studying and sharing education again. Michelle Wool. Michelle, Miller South School for the Visual and Performing Arts, earned a perfect score in fifth grade English Language Arts. And in 2018, she scored a perfect score in fourth grade math. Andrew Burkhart. Andrew, a STEM middle school student, earned a perfect score in fourth grade math. And in 2018, he earned a perfect score in third grade math. Julia Hook. Matthew Cyberman. Zimmerman. Thank you. A STEM middle school student as well, earned a perfect score in fifth grade math. And in 2018, he earned a perfect score in fourth grade math. And in 2017, he earned a perfect score in third grade math. Kale Ekman. Andy Gold. Andy Goff. Sisters. Isabella Rambler, a STEM middle school student as well, earned a perfect score in seventh grade math. And in 2017, she earned a perfect score in fifth grade math. And in 2016, she earned a perfect score in fourth grade math. And from Hyper Elementary School, Johnson Mason. And Samaria Karam. Samara Karam. Karen. She earned from Sam Salem CLC, earned a perfect score this year in two areas. Fifth grade English Language Arts and fifth grade math. Cameron Henry. And from Windermere CLC, Nora Rowe. Delaney Lewis from King CLC, earned a perfect score in fourth grade math. And in 2018, she earned a perfect score in third grade math. These perfect scores did not happen by accident. It took a lot of hard work and studying on the part of the students. It took a lot of hard work on the part of their teachers. And just as important, it took a lot of work on the part of their parents to encourage them to continue to do the excellent work that they are doing. We would like to thank parents for being a part of their children's education. For those who are not able to be here tonight, we will make sure that their certificates and bags are delivered to their schools for them. Your acts, the honorees, to assemble outside so that we can take a group photo together. Yes?
My son didn't get called. Isaac Brady.
What was his name?
Brady, B-R-A-D-Y.
What school?
Uh, Elec.
Okay, we've got the bag. I must have missed the certificate. Hold up, Isaac. Must have grabbed yours and must have stuck to one of these just like that one was about to. And so we congratulate Isaac Brady from Elec CLC for his outstanding work. Apologize for that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that was to be honored and who did not call your name? Okay, thank you. So if you would assemble outside, then a photo will be taken of all of the honorees.
Hi Ginger. I think you'd say hi when you walk.
I know you were called to do this. Congratulations, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you.
Again. How many more?
Never came on?
Yeah.
Mine was like that too. Same age. Same problem.
One of the other kids was one of his best friends through elementary school.
And this is recharged, which is plugged in.
Oh, sorry. That's okay. It's not gonna be good for the computer.
In the rooms.
No lights at all.
Yeah. So is that stuff all up there?
Maybe. I don't have it.
Oh, my goodness.
Doesn't matter. They're all the same too. Probably.
They're pretty bold.
They are. They are. I love them.
Thank you.
Well, that's exciting. Very.
Like three days ago. Before he died. Before I plugged it back in.
Well, you want to leave with us?
He's a light coming on the side of the wall. With the power.
It's dead.
Great.
It's dead. So, you want to leave with us?
More than last. Breaking.
Give her mine. I just turned white.
I just touched it. Oh, yes. You just plugged it.
Mine didn't come on either.
No?
Finally, it popped on.
Thank you very much. Oh, sure. That's a good idea.
Friends, man. They'll find you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you so much.
Our next on our agenda would be our communications, our presentation for our district report card.
May I go ahead and introduce? I have an introduction. I was gonna.
Introduction?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
So.
Mansfield.
Thank you. We, we're gonna have our presentation tonight about the state report card and our district's expectations. This won't be officially announced by the state until Friday, but this is the board preview. So we have lots of conversations. We get lots of great data out of the state report card. But let's not forget that it's under review at the state level, so it's imperfect. It's an imperfect snapshot picture of our district on any given day. It's, you know, it's one specific day in, you know, a snapshot for our kids and tries to capture everything that we do for all those weeks. So keeping that in mind, it does have its merits in the data and the things we're able to get from it. But Ellen's gonna take, Dr. McWilliams Woods is gonna take some time to explain it. And remember, remembering again that whether it's understandable to educators, whether it's understandable or fair for parents, or an accurate measure of a district's performance is in question. Thank you. That was my commentary.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mansfield. And now Dr. McWilliams Woods.
Thank you very much. For the veterans on the board, this presentation, I've tried to keep it pretty consistent over the years so that the consistency of comparing one year to the next is there for you, so that we don't change it up so dramatically that you can't compare where we were. Tonight, what we're going to do is talk about really our outcomes and our results. This is a snapshot of the results. I'm gonna show you kind of two parts today. I'm gonna show you the report card that will be posted on Friday at the latest. It may be as early as Thursday. But then, the state, if you remember, also has enabled us to put a link on the report card that links to what we call the rest of the story, that also features what we value and what we have established as some important indicators, including some of the arts and areas like that, that I will also give you a preview. And then obviously, you can take a look in more detail at your leisure, because there's quite a bit of information on what we call our district profile that supplements the report card. We're gonna look at the report card. We'll review highlights and next steps, as I always do at this time of year. And then we'll also talk about some of the way that the report card gets released in that timeline. So just to remind you, this is last year. This is not the current year yet. This is just to remind you what the six components are, what it looks like. This was a new format last year for the state on featuring the six components. And if you remember, last year was the first time that we had the overall grade, the composites of the six come together into one grade. And last year, we ended up with a D with, you know, kind of a combination of grades across the six measures. And I'm gonna step through the six measures as we go through. Another reminder, this is a year old's data. I don't today have any other district data to share with you, because that hasn't been released yet. So I'm only giving you a preview of what we believe will be on our report card on Friday. But then right away on Friday, we start looking at state averages, state performance, what were the grades and subjects increased and decreased, which provides a lot of information for us. This is what the state history and trend has been. And can you remember what happened during that from the 95.7 performance index over those two years? Can you remember what happened during those times? Right, changed tests and new standards. The new, at that point, it was Common Core and then the Ohio Standards. So that was sort of the trend. And now, as a state, we're starting to kind of march back from a new baseline that was established. So that's just the reminder of the sequence. This also is last year, because I don't have this new data yet. But just as a reminder, this is sort of, it's a very traditional kind of bell curve, right, of performance across the state. This is the distribution of the report card grades. And we've been in that D category with 122 other districts. And you're familiar with the districts in the F category that are either at risk or falling under the Academic Distress Commission. So that's kind of the context and sort of reminder of where we were. And now we'll step through the six components. These are the six components. And there, you see how they're weighted, that the achievement component and the progress component represent 40% of the combined grade. And then everything else is worth 15%. That's how it's pulled together in a final grade. And I'm gonna step through each one of those. The changes for the veterans on the board, you know, I became famous for my apples, oranges, and bananas visuals in this presentation, where I kept saying there were such dramatic changes to tests and report card measures, that I kept saying you can't compare year to year to year. I'm not using, and last year I didn't use the apples, oranges, and bananas, because it is stabilizing the report card. Although, I can never, ever stand in front of you and say it is exactly the same as the year before. So there are five changes that did happen. And these are some pretty significant changes, like the K3 literacy target and the gap closure targets. What our goal was that we had to reach were raised. So the bar went up, very similar to kind of a stepping stone that every year it's gonna get tougher and tougher and tougher. So know that. And I'll remind you when we get to the measure that these, the bar was raised, which makes the bar, obviously, the goal tougher to reach. But we still had some success in these areas despite the bar going up. Value added, there were some changes just on how demotions are used. Another important thing is subgroup size. And many of you were kind of part of the advocacy groups at the state level about how many students you needed to have a subgroup count on your report card or not. The state, it used to be 25 students, and now it's gone down to 20 students to be counted on your report card as a subgroup. The purpose of that is to make sure there aren't hidden kids in some of the subgroups, like by race or by students with disabilities, by gifted, that are kind of hidden in a district where they're not actually performing, because you don't have enough kids to count as a subgroup. The state is on a three-year cycle of lowering the subgroup size, so that more subgroups are counted in more schools and more districts, to make sure there aren't hidden groups that are underperforming that no one is paying attention to. So there are more subgroups that have come out. In Akron, we've had most subgroups hit anyway, because we're such a diverse district. But it's important for you to know that some schools picked up some additional subgroups this year. And then the chronic absence target actually dropped a little bit this year, because they use state average. So our first indicator is our achievement indicator. And we received a grade of D on this indicator, which is the same as last year. We saw improvement in the performance index and key indicators. And the achievement is all about whether you met an 80% bar on all of the tested grades and subjects. And also, performance index looks at where kids scored, whether they were accelerated, advanced, and if you're moving kids to different levels. So those two measures, here's our performance index. I gave you a whole, you know, multi-year trend, so that you can see we continue in the right direction. We just saw a small increase this year, but that still means we have more kids scoring in higher performance levels. It might have been a student proficient going to advanced, but that's the movement. We get more points, and that's how our performance index goes up. In our actual indicator, performance, and on the handout, if you try to look at this at home, the highlights didn't quite come out as sharp, and I'll be sure to email this presentation to you too, so you can see it. We had for social studies and science, some minimal improvement here. After some big gains last year, we saw sort of minimal improvement. If it's yellow, it means it's consistent with last year. And if it's green, we went up. And if it's red, there was some type of drop. And in the bottom, or the last column, it shows you the increase, or whether it stayed the same within one point or a drop. So science and social studies, after bigger increases, then we kind of plateaued or took a little bit of a dip this year. Again, I don't know, once we see the state average, whether that's consistent across the state, or whether that's unique to us. But we've already started to dive into where these results, where, what standards we're missing, and making sure that we're addressing that. For reading, we have mixed improvement here. We have some nice gains in third grade, which we're thrilled about, a bigger gain in third grade. And then a few grades that either stayed the same or saw a small or a medium-sized drop. But then we saw three grade levels increase. So I consider this sort of mixed results. The past couple of years, we've had more of majority increases. So this year. So this year, we have to sort of pause and say, what is it that we're seeing mixed results this year, rather than kind of across-the-board increases? Particularly, the last couple of years, we've seen at least the majority increase. And then, in math, we have more increases here, or kind of consistent with where we were last year. And in math, same thing. Last year, we had some big increases, and then we sort of plateaued or had some increases. So I consider this stable improvements, but we certainly would like to see more green improvements here, but we did have four grades improve. Again, third grade, we had some, a nice increase there, and we're glad to see geometry starting to move, because that's been pretty difficult for us over the years.
Just...
Yeah?
I don't want to, I hate to interrupt your presentation.
Yes.
So the percent proficient for, say, for 2018, I'm looking at, say, grade three was 44%.
Right.
In 2018.
And then we...
Class moved to grade four in 2019. So is really what you're kind of looking at a 44% to 56%?
To follow the same cohort? Absolutely. If you, and many of our reports that we look at, we watch the cohort to see where were students. So yes, in third grade, students were at 44%. Those same students, except for some high mobile students, but the same students scored 56%. Yes. That's a good way to look at it. A lot of my staff likes to look at it that way, rather than just by grade by grade, but ultimately, we're, our performance is based on each grade independently. So when we dig more into which cohort of students is really struggling, we look more at multi-year.
While you're stopped for a second.
Yes.
Quick question on a, on a overall level. So does the state look at the fact if, say, the seventh grade test overall, or the algebra one test, everyone has a 5% drop, or everyone has a really large drop? Do they make note of that and then look back at the test and say, was there a test problem? Is that ever a consideration?
We regularly bring that to the attention of the state, especially when we look at all of the districts. We'll come together and say, look, in third grade last year, everybody took a seven or eight percent. They will work with the vendors to look at why, and to see if the complexity level of the questions were off. Rarely do they come back and say, there was a problem with the test. They'll generally acknowledge that, yes, across the entire state of Ohio, there was a drop in a specific grade, so there must have been something going on with the test. But they rarely will say, we, there was a problem, or the questions were just way off grade level, or something like that. But they do listen, and they take that into consideration. One thing that I want to show you, just in terms of, which is a great, I could have paid you to ask that question, and then go to this next slide, because, because of the way the tests have changed over the years, we started really paying very close attention to the assessments that are consistent for us, which is MAP. And this is, we've been using MAP for eight or nine years now, and this slide shows, reading is on the left and math is on the right. And this is from fall to kind of late winter, early spring last year, what our growth looked like. The top column, or the top row is fall, and then the winter, early spring is the bottom row. And it shows, obviously, if you see more green, we have more students scoring in the universal, which means they're on grade level or close to being on grade level, and less yellow and red, which is the targeted and intensive tiers. So this is what we're looking at lifetime all the time in our district, based on our MAP results that show the growth that we want to see. One other indicator that is on the report card now is chronic absenteeism, and we did see a drop in the percentage of students who are chronically absent. It went from 24% down to 23%. Now, obviously, 23% is very high. We've been, the superintendent and I, along with Ryan, we've been talking a lot about attendance, to try to figure out what strategies we need to put in place on kind of a larger scale in the district, and really the city, for attendance, because this is a substantially high rate. This is excused, or unexcused absences for students, and looking at needing to reduce that. But we are headed in the right direction, based on the attendance strategies that we've put in place. This is just a really important slide to drill down on why attendance is so important. What this slide shows is our MAP results based on students' attendance. So if you look in the upper right-hand corner, if you are severely chronically absent, it's red, and if you have good attendance, that 95% and higher, it's green. And you can see the top row is the advanced performance level on the state test. It's probably all the kids that were sitting in here in the audience. The kids who are scoring at the highest performance level have the best attendance. You're probably not surprised to hear that. But when you look at this chart, and the perfect kind of step down that the next level's accelerated, proficient, basic, and limited, the limited students have, are struggling with attendance the most. So attendance is a huge issue that we have to keep focused on and working on and putting strategies in place, because the more we can get kids here, the higher their performance will be, in other words. So that's the first category, the achievement category. Now, for value added, this is our growth measure, but the value added, our value added score turned out to be an F this year, which shows where we are relative to all other districts in the state of Ohio. So if everyone grows in the state, but the other districts may grow a little bit more than us, then our value added is going to be lower. But what's, we just got these results on Friday, but here's what is, we can't figure out for today. I wasn't able to figure this out today during the day. Look at our value-added results for our schools. We have seven schools with As in value-added, 12 with Bs, five with Cs, 14 Ds, and only five Fs. So when you look at that, when you put all those together, that should represent the district. So this troubles us and concerns us in terms of why do we, as a district, have an F when the vast majority of our schools, the majority of the schools have Ab's and Cs, and then the next category, the Ds, and very few Fs. So we're trying to work through that. We have our gurus in value-added analyzing this, to try to figure out how that could be. And value added, as you know, is a, that calculation isn't published, so we can't necessarily verify it, but it just doesn't seem to make sense that our schools are doing well, but then the district summary turns out to be an F. So stay tuned, I will let you know what we find out about that. So now, our next component is graduation rate, and as you know, there's a four and a five year. It's important to remember, these results are a year behind. So this is a class of 2018. It's not this last year. It's always a year behind, because we get to include summer graduates. The good news here is that we received up on top a D, which we went up from an F to a D in our graduation rate. So we moved up one grade, which we're very, very pleased about. Here's the trajectory of what our four-year graduation has been, and then our five-year ended up at 79.9. This is what it looks like visually, on what, over the years, what our graduation rate looks like, and you could see kind of that nice trajectory the past three years. Okay, the next one is gap closure. We have a C in gap closure, which means we're doing a solid job closing gaps, and that's a continued strength for us. We are closing gaps in English. I've listed the subgroups where we're closing gaps. And then, in math, it's every single subgroup. We have closed gaps in every single subgroup for math versus English, and that's the full list of subgroups off to the right. So this continues to be a strength for us, that when you look at the state, and this is despite, this is one of the measures where the bar was raised, okay? The bar was raised on what bar you had to meet to close the gap. The state raised it, but we still closed gaps in math, and we were able to earn a C for the district in this area. The next one, our K-3 measure, which continues to be a strength for us. We moved up to a C, which is one grade higher for our K-3 literacy, which we're very excited about. And we're basically, the way this measure works is, are we moving off-track students in kindergarten, for example, in the fall? When we test them again in first grade in the fall, have they moved to on-track? So in that year's time that we had them, did we move the students from off-track to on-track? This continues to be a strength for us. This is 2017, 18, so this is a year ago. Just watch the blue and the red compared to this year. You see how there's a lot more blue and a lot less red? That means we're moving more and more off-track kids to on-track. And most importantly, we also, part of this measure is, we also increased the percentage of students promoted in third grade to fourth grade. In other words, meeting the third-grade guarantee. We went from 98.3% to 99.1%. There were only 14 students, I believe, retained, Mary Outley Kelly, right? I think that deserves a round of applause for us.
Dr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Can we also point out that that's with proof that many of our students come in way behind their suburban peers as far as skills to be reading? So the fact that we're catching them up and that they are able to be promoted by third grade into fourth is really a huge kudo to our staff. I mean, it's just, it's fantastic, the growth that we're talking about.
That's right. If you, if you think of where we're starting, and then it doesn't, that means we're not just moving kids just a year, in a year's time during that kindergarten for a second, to get caught up, to be able to be promoted. Absolutely. And then, the last measure, the prepared-for-success. This is the measure that takes a look at indicators that indicate whether a student is ready primarily for college, and this is one of the areas that the state is seriously looking at revising, because it's a little bit more heavily weighted towards college preparedness versus work. But we received an F, which is the same as last year, but here's, we've been improving across the board. So where you see green is where we have improved the indicators that make up this measure. The industry-recognized credential, remember, this is a year ago. The graduates, it's a year ago. So the wonderful news of this industry credential that we keep showing you, because we're so excited about it, that we increased, 618% increase in the number of students receiving an industry credential. We didn't get credit for that, because that was this past year. The prepared-for-success measure is for the class of 2018. It's a year behind. So next year, we should see a nice, if they keep this part of the report card, we don't know, but we'll, we'll get credit for it in 2020. Okay? So here's the summary of where we ended up, with a solid D, with increases in our, in two of our measures, which we haven't had increases in two of our report card measures in, I'm not sure how long, for a long time. We've hit maybe one increase periodically, but this year, we increased in two measures, but it still comes out composite-wise to a D, same as last year. Here's the history of where we are, and the little asterisk means that there was a change in the report card measure, just so you can see how many different changes the past two years that I started tracking that. So we increased our graduation grade and our K-3 literacy grade, and then our chronic absenteeism in third-grade guarantee, those indicators also went up. This, I'm, I put this slide in just as a reminder with our brothers and sisters who are in the, under the Academic Distress Commission. This is a report that a gal from Lorraine put together that shows the districts that have fallen under the Academic Distress Commission or are at risk for that, which we are not, and we never have been in that pathway, fortunately. But when you look at the disadvantaged student percentage and the median income, which is where we're in that same mix with the rest of the schools, you can see the districts that are falling in the category are all very, very similar income level. We're proud that we have the same data, but we've been able to improve our graduation, improve our K-3 literacy, keep moving forward, that we've been able to stay out of this list. So as always, I give you some talking points to be able to kind of summarize all of this. And here's the key, I think there's seven points. One is our report card component grades improved in two out of the six areas. Two additional reported items improved, that chronic absenteeism and third-grade guarantee. And then, what I just said, despite similar percentages of students living in poverty and median family incomes, we continue to outperform the similar districts as ours, therefore not falling under the state takeover. Seven grades did improve in reading or math, so that, we need to acknowledge that and be proud of those teachers, particularly in those grades. And then, we're closing gaps between the subgroups, and in math especially, I don't know if I've ever stood up here and said, we've closed gaps in every single subgroup, but we did that in math this year, which we need to be very proud of. We're substantially graduating more students in four years. You saw the trajectory of the graduation rates. There's a piece to this, that we also changed the way we look at students with disabilities with graduation, and we decided a year ago that we wanted to make sure that all students with disabilities were having equal access to the different options for graduation pathways, instead of exempting them and just saying they don't need to meet the requirements, which is allowed by law. And we stopped just kind of universally letting IEP teams just kind of make that decision on a somewhat of an easier basis, just to say, oh, it's a student with a disability, we'll exempt them. We wanted to make sure that students with disabilities, especially with our college and career academies, that they are equally a part of all of the rigorous training and the rigorous responsibilities. And we are proud that the vast majority of our students with disabilities in the 2018 graduated, just like everyone else, with the traditional or an alternative pathway. And then, this year, class of 2019, it's almost 100%. We just have a handful of students with disabilities who needed to use a different pathway. So we're very proud of that. And then, our high percentage of third-grade students promoted. So those are the key takeaways from this presentation. Lastly, our web link to share the rest of the story. Let me just pull it up so that you can see what's on here. So this is where, this is on the front page of the report card. There's a link that says district profile. This is also a link on our regular APS website, and it has all of our stats for college and career readiness, for example, you know, college credits earned, scholarships, internship, job shadowing hours, a lot of the things that you get updated from our instruction from our Instructional Policy Committee, each board meeting. And then it goes into, the 85% of our graduates from 36 career programs are successfully enrolled in college or employed or enlisted. And then we get into, we showcase our essential learning experiences and our partnerships with our elementary and the number of students, 9,000 students, will be participating in the essential experiences out in the community this year. Our International Baccalaureate is highlighted. The Fine Arts is my favorite section because it talks about the stats on our offerings, which is really very, we should be very proud of because there's not that many districts in our region that have the breadth of programming that we have. And we don't showcase that enough in this district. So this is a way to do this. Whenever you're out doing speaking engagements, this is where you should come, or you should pull it up when you're speaking and showcase all of these offerings that we have. And then further down, we talk about our graduation comparisons. This is still a couple of years old just because we don't have the full data yet to update this, but we will within the next couple of weeks. But I know last year, this was powerful for the board to see when students, on the left-hand side, when students are enrolled in the Akron Public Schools all four years, the graduation rate was 81% versus if you come in and out or come in midway, then your graduation rate is 48%. And we'll be updating this soon. And then the rest of the data, you can take a look at yourself. It's more of our district map data and trends over time that shows that.
Quick question?
Yes.
So I always find the graduation rate really interesting because we talk about, you know, 40% or somewhere around there of our students being mobile. You know, 40% of our students are not finishing the school year where they start the school year, and that has a huge impact. Not to mention the number of students that aren't in the district at all and then come into the district at some point during the year. And we're often picking up the pieces from wherever they went before us. So I'm always intrigued by the graduation rate because we're at 79% if I believe, you know, a year behind. So 2018 students, both for four-year and five-year, are both at about a 79%. But for the students that attend APS all four years of high school, our graduation rate is really 86% or 87%, whatever that was. Do you ever look at that and sort of isolate that for the rest of the data points as well? So what is our proficiency rate in the different subjects, for the different grade levels, for those kids who spend all of their time with us?
We have done some reporting. We stopped updating the charts when we were changing tests every year because it just became too almost chaotic to try to isolate that we were the difference, you know, for the test results. But I think now, we just, I just submitted a whole data request through our new kind of strategy team to be able to look at some of the profiles of our students who are coming in and leaving, to look at the difference between if you've been here throughout multiple years versus who's leaving and who's coming back, and what their profile looks like. Because I think it's not only informing our results and our performance, but it also needs to inform us on what we need to do when we're receiving students who come in so substantially behind the rest. You know, just putting them, plopping them right back into a classroom maybe isn't the best. There might need to be more transition work, almost like a boot camp to get the students up to speed before they just come right back in.
I mean, every year when, when these results come out, and we have this presentation, and we're out in the community, and, you know, it sometimes might seem to the average person that we're, you know, we're, we're looking for those bright spots, those seven points that you gave, and really many more that I picked up on even just throughout the presentation.
Yeah.
But we're always looking at those into the average person. Sometimes it seems as if we're saying, "Look, you know, we got an overall grade as a D, but wait, you know, there's more, or here's a link, read more." But I think sometimes it's, I mean, we all have our thoughts on the state tests and the changes and the apples, the oranges, the bananas, the pineapples, the coconut. We were running out of fruits, we had salad.
And everywhere I went, I was getting gifts of oranges and bananas and apples. It became, it became quite a thing.
And we have all of those thoughts from part to air to, you know, just all the tests and all the changes and the raising the bars and all of that. But there's so much more to be said, I think, about the district. And often I think it's the way, the way that it gets portrayed and the way that it gets focused on. We had the discussions, you know, the last several years about how can we be achieving at an 80% and still get a D? Why is an 80%? An 80% is a letter grade, is always a B, but we get an 80% and it's a D. You know, so we've, we've had all of that. But I hope that people understand. I hope that our folks that are reporting on this and, you know, will, you know, appreciate what's behind all of that and what's behind the extra data and why we're pointing out those great things or those shining things that are coming about and recognizing the challenges that urban public education brings with it and why these, these other things are so much more important to us. So I know I'm not being very eloquent, but, but it is important because we're, these report cards are going to come out. We're going to go out, we're going to talk in the community. I know I already have some meetings coming up that I know that they'll ask about these things, so.
I do think we're finally at a place where it's a collective across the state of Ohio that people recognize that nearly everything on here is related to a test score and that that is such a small snapshot of, of everything that's, that should be. You know, what you measure is certainly what happens and you focus on in school districts. So when the state says, "We're measuring test scores," then that's what every district, for the most part, is going to focus on. If they want us to focus on other college and career readiness factors, they have to measure that then. They have to make that be a central part of how many students are going directly successfully into the workforce. Or the industry credentials should be not just hidden as a small little indicator that gets tagged on if you have a high ACT score. That should be recognized separately. It's all of those that now there's a chorus across the state, including a lot of legislators, that are saying, "We have to be measuring something beyond this heavy, heavy focus on test scores."
I think it's socially, socially, emotionally, whatever. It's also unfair to the students to suggest that 20,000 students, that that's, that's the portrait of our students. I think that's patently unfair to them. It's patently unfair to the, to the parents and the folks in this community that send their kids to our schools.
Yeah.
I think it sends the complete wrong message, and we all know that. So I'm not going to stand on a soapbox for too long. But I'm glad that you point out the other things because no one would also ever suggest that Akron Public Schools on a whole, that, that the kids coming out of there in 12th grade, that that's who they are. So I'm glad that you point out the other things.
Yeah. The final thing, and then if there's any other questions, is just to reinforce the timeline and sort of the sequence of what happens. The early morning on Thursday, or it could be Friday, but it may be Thursday, the superintendent gets the spreadsheet of all the districts across the state, and he gets one hour to absorb all that before it gets posted and released to the media and gets opened up on ODE's website. And then we'll be able to sit down and analyze the statewide data, which informs us tremendously. And then we also look at similar districts to see what their performance is. And we really start to dive in the building-by-building results as well. The next steps in terms of our focus, I'm not going to go through these, but you know, you know, therefore, we're certainly pleased that we increased two grades. And we can't lose that fact that we increased two grades out of six on the report card, which is significant for us. But we also know that this is the work that you all have helped us construct moving forward. And that continued focus on the family, resource centers, wraparound support. We have a new math adoption. We have new software that the Instructional Policy Committee got to see firsthand that creates individual pathways for students to work harder and deeper on their reading and math. Attendance strategies, I talked to you already about, and deepening the strategies around that. Cultural competency and some of our social-emotional learning standards. That's our work over the next probably three years. That's going to be kind of this next major wave that will all get anchored in our college and career academies. Any other questions? Yeah?
Just curious. Working in Finance Committee, we always have a spreadsheet where we can plug what-ifs into the spreadsheet. And I was wondering, from this standpoint, you know, you showed our MAP scores and how those are changing. We know our graduation rate went up last year. We know our credential numbers went up last year. So if we were to plug those numbers into what's coming out this Friday, any speculation on what the grades might be? Or is that something you wouldn't necessarily want to share or know?
For graduation and for...
And all that, and how that would actually affect our grade card if they were using 2019 information instead of, you know, 15-month-old information?
In another couple of weeks, I will have it just because of summer, the summer graduates that we have to get, summer graduates. We have to get the, all the results back from summer and then add those in. Well, it's not just, you know, it's not just the, there's other students that are doing some credit recovery-type things that will wave in here. So when, once we get all that, then we, we have calculators for everything that we can put in and start simulations to see where we are. The tricky part with graduation is a student can leave in ninth grade and go AWOL or drop out, but we don't know where they are. They could be in Texas going to school, or they could be someplace else. And we research and try to find, we have staff that go try to find every single kid that, that looks like they just drop out or disappear. And those are the numbers that keep changing. When we find a student, then we can get them off our books so that they're not counting. Because any student that walks away from, looks like they're nowhere, they count against our graduation. Even if they leave the first week of school in ninth grade, they count against our graduation rate four years later. So that's the moving target, that that can change every single day. You know, that, that moves and alters our denominator. It's an amazing process, but we have a great process with Howard Lawson over here and Dan Rambler and his team. All right?
Thank you for pointing out the, the poverty piece to that as well or the urban piece to that. You know, there's rural poverty as well, and there's, there are several maps online that overlay state report cards and poverty rates and have you look at, you know, is this a fair representation? Is it equitable? Is it, is it all of those pieces? So thanks for pointing that out. I'm turning this way because Mr. Williamson told me that they can't hear us. It feels really weird to talk to you like this, but. In addition to the things that you listed, some of the things that were popping into my head as you were talking, that we're looking forward to in the next couple of years, are results from our partners with United Way and the Bold Goals. You know, what effect is that going to have on graduation rate as well as our college and career academies? What, what effect is that going to have on the third-grade reading? So I'm, I have a positive feeling about where we are going, going forward. We never make excuses. We never, we're never saying that, that we don't accept the results. We're just saying we're not done yet. We're still fighting against the tide, whatever that tide is. And so all of those things that you listed are fantastic in addition to all the other partners that are out there, SEI and the work that they're doing as well. So I just thought I'd point those out.
We just spent an hour with SEI this afternoon on some of those same conversations, right? Okay.
I'm sorry, real quick, does, does this data marry well with the Forecast 5 system? Or are they kind of separate systems?
Forecast 5 just takes our current data, that is all of this data. And we can look at it particularly across the academic and the operation side, the finance, the human resource. So it's that crossover. We also have Tableau, which is our reporting system on the academic that we primarily use for academic purposes in the district, that we can drill down into any data, lifetime, every single day. We can look at attendance, we can look at performance, test performance, and we can drill all the way down to specific students that we need to see. So we have that lifetime capability. But Forecast 5 kind of takes that to a whole nother level and then enables us to cross over and mix databases from academic to operations. And that's what we're so excited about, that next level of analysis.
Yes. Are we, so we've been using MAP for a while. And I think you said maybe eight, eight or nine years. Is it still tracking well as far as sort of a predictor of success on state tests?
Yeah, it has about an 85% confidence level. So there's reports in MAP that say, based on what the trajectory for the student, they're predicted to score this on the Ohio State Test. And it's 85% confidence level, which means they're, they're about right 85% of the time. So that's very high in terms of predictability.
And so we should be buoyed a little bit by the results that you showed earlier on the MAP testing that, given that we're a year plus behind in the data that's reported now that we are, we should see those results.
Right, and, and that's been what we've seen over the past few years, that those early results that were sort of underneath the OST that were catching up and starting to see the OST then move along as well. Now, we didn't see it fully across every single grade, but that's where we'll dig in to see where did it plateau. What we do, what we've learned at Harvard and Darden School of Business, the executive leadership programs that we've been through around school turnaround, is about every three years, you do hit a plateau oftentimes, and that's when you need to look at the next level of strategies. You don't bail on what you're doing, but you get those gains. And then you sometimes hit a plateau, and then you move on and put in the next level of strategies that you saw and are familiar with. That's, that will take you through those next three years. And then you usually have to be ready for the next change. That's kind of the trajectory of school improvement, according to the national experts that we've been fortunate, many of us have been fortunate to train with. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we need to approve the regular meeting minutes for August 26. So motion? Then move properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
At this time, we will have our personnel recommendations. I, I'll do it then.
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 43 personnel recommendations in categories 5 through 16. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved.
Then moved?
Second.
Properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo? I got it. Okay.
All right. Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and seven resolutions on the consent agenda in category 21. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved.
Second.
Removed, properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 10 resolutions for the disposal of real property in category 24. I'll put these out as a group, but if you want to pull any one for, any one resolution of the 10 for special consideration, you just need a voice call from the floor.
So moved. It's been properly moved?
Second.
Properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 19 business affairs recommendations in category 25. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
The motion has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Roll call, oh, yes.
I had a question of, I sent an email this morning. I don't know if that...
Oh, yeah, 25...
26.
26.
I'm still trying to figure out my name.
Yeah, that one is in student services for students who get assigned there as, you know, part of their responsibilities for the code of student behavior will have those services available to that student and their family.
So this is, is it, is a current employee or is he a...
No, it's a contract service.
Okay.
That's 2516.
Which I love that we're providing that kind of training to children and families as a way to get back into the regular classroom.
And that was for anger management.
And conflict resolution.
Conflict resolution.
Thank you. I just don't remember that.
The name is...
Mm-hmm, I'm getting there. It's hard to keep up with the system. Okay, sorry.
All right.
So we need a roll call.
Roll call.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, abstaining from items one through six.
Thank you. Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Yeah, a couple of, a couple of items, I know you'll notice in the hallway, there are a couple of metal detectors. Thanks to a safety grant, we've gotten metal detectors for this building as well as some of our high schools. I know when I visited Ellet, you, if you walked in the lobby, you could see those. So we've sent out instructions to our staff, you know, just because of events that have happened over the summer to do more of our random metal detector searches. And we'll also start those here in a random manner, except we'll probably use them at the next board meeting, you know, just in terms of the environment that we live in today. So we're real happy with that grant and I know Dan Rambler did a great job of working with the city on that safety grant. So we have a few more tools to make sure that our staff and our students are safe, which includes this building as well.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, one more. As so, as we, you know, talk about our district focus, you know, in the late summer, well, it's still summer, I guess until the 20-something of this month, but in August, we had our retreat with my strategy team. So we are going to be making some adjustments to our district focus, but one of the things is making sure that our organization is prime so we can get to where we need to go over the next couple of years. So I will be proposing some changes to some staff, primarily moving our executive staff. For instance, Dr. McWilliams Woods, I have a proposal that I'll share with you a little bit later, moving to more of a chief academic officer role and then working with some of our, you know, with, again, as Morgan mentioned, with Forecast Five analytics, I think we have an opportunity to do a little bit more with our data. So we're making better decisions and really looking at some of the relationships. A lot of times with data, if you look at some non-academic issues, they actually do impact our academics. So the other part of that is, you know, Mr. Pendleton working with some of my staff around data and how we can actually collaborate more. So I'll talk a little bit about that later. The other one is I met with Morgan and picked her brain last week, I think, about, you know, marketing and information and communications and even legislative work, because I think for some of the things that we have gotten into this past year, we need to, you know, really take a hard look at what we're doing, you know, with our legislature. Sometimes, you know, relying on our state agencies or organizations, you know, like BAS, OAS, BO and OSBA is fine, but as an urban district, our needs are very unique, similar to, you know, like the chorus group, those rural districts. So there are some things that, you know, thank you, Morgan, for helping me out there, looking at, you know, how we can be more efficient with our time, not just our messaging, but how we can engage the public in our state, you know, legislature and governor's office in a more efficient and better manner.
Thank you. Reverend Walker?
Yes.
And I wanted to go back, I was trying to comment on what Superintendent said on the, his first message about the safety. I'm glad that we're doing that because I've noticed in the past couple of weeks, there's some school districts outside of Cleveland and other areas in the state, they're doing something to try to protect the staff, the students, as well as their, their employees. So I wanted to thank you guys for doing that. That is something we need to constantly, consistently look at to make sure we improve so everyone is safe because we don't want anybody to have any issues or problems, but that is a great thing that's, that's being done so everyone is being safe, including being down here at the board itself. Thank you.
Thank you. By way of President's report, in our scrimmage, and I've talked with the Vice President, I need your input. We want to have a retreat and possibly a Friday, Saturday retreat, possibly off grounds. We've done that in the past. We have some key issues that we need to discuss, some of which the superintendent has already highlighted. Mr. Bravo already mentioned about our early education piece that we need to talk about, that he'll be giving a report. The retreat wouldn't be until after the election so we can sit down, figure out what direction we want to go in, even invite possibly who the newly elected persons might be so that we can move forward and have an agenda for the coming years as to what we need to do. So please let myself or Mr. Miller know if there are items or suggested place that we might have a retreat so that we can spend some quality time talking about some of the things the superintendent has already brought up. The treasure will be bringing to our attention so that we can be on top of things, be proactive instead of waiting to respond to something that occurs. Okay? Right. At this time, treasures report?
No report, although I'm excited for my homework assignment from the young man, Thomas. We got a chance to talk outside a little bit, so I'm going to be doing some study and reporting back to him. So I'm looking forward to that.
Committee reports, legal, contract and board policy?
No report.
The finance and capital management committee?
No report. We meet next week.
Instructional policy and student achievement?
No report. I would just point out the family resource instructional policy, our update that's at your place. Excited about that and particularly the piece about the financial empowerment center in that. So just take a look at it on your own time.
Unfinished business? New business? We do need to go into executive session pursuant to revised core code, section 121 dot 22G1 for the purpose of an employment, discipline or compensation of a public employee or official of the school district. I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Thank you.